Call that to order. We've already pledged allegiance to the flag. We don't need to see any alternates. Or do we? For what we're about for the 18, do we need to? For number 10?
I don't know. Is anybody an alternate?
I'm the alternate, but everybody's here.
Christian opposite, but I think we have enough people.
We've got all five, so I don't even-
Alright, so we don't have to see any alternates after the-
No, you've got all five.
Alright. Well, assuming everybody heard the whole application. Alright, fine. So, number four, then, the Z E O report.
Do we have any further comments?
Yes.
I just finished up counting the wetlands files and zoning files. I'm working on office. Instead of having any department, having some plans, I found there was a fire under one. So now all the wetlands, the zoning, the same first number. Now working on the compensation file. And question?
Okay, hearing no.
Is it a compilation? We see a compilation of those. Is it just there?
A vision of permits, from what I'm telling you, on the site that was consolidated filed by street. Instead of having four different spots in the town hall, down to one, instead of the other street. Twenty thousand, for twenty thousand, it's going to tend to the wetland files. The zoning files, the compensation files. Change a lot of time on the town.
Yeah, so anything having to do with that piece of property is going to be in that one file, which makes a lot of sense.
Simplify.
Correct, yeah. Could you believe that?
Excluding both.
Excluding the both.
Everything in fire.
Be separate.
And now that's it.
Okay, let's move on to number five. Do we have the minutes for September 12?
The only thing I see is typographical error in the motion to approve a lot revision and have the Mylar signed. It is written as 43 to nothing. It should be 3 to nothing because it was Mr. Brennan that actually abstained because, I believe he came in after it started. Is that true? Yeah, so it should, instead of 43 to zero to one with Mr. Z E O abstaining, it should be 3 to zero to one with Mr. Brennan abstaining.
Any other changes, corrections? In case we have a motion. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the?
There's a motion.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? You can abstain. Any abstentions? Okay, one. So carried. Public comment, number six. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Alright, hearing no. Move on to number seven. An 824 for all to, from the selectmen. 128 West Street. Want to give us a little background on-
Mr. Chairman, that's a, um, the resident that took us to a vaccine. It's not proper. You can ask them to ask the parole place to make the decision.
Does anybody have any questions? It's a fairly mundane, routine thing. Alright, anybody want to make a motion to? Now, what we're doing actually is we're, we're not approving. We're, we're just- Yeah, we're reporting back to the selectmen that this is an appropriate disposition, like she said-
Who's in charge of selling it? Is it the state or the county?
We've got the senior project.
Like a motion?
Okay, so should we make a motion? Somebody make a motion? That we are-
I'll make a motion for the parole.
We're finding it's an appropriate disposition of the property. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? So carried. Alright, number eight. Food truck or mobile vendor regulation proposal.
Mr. Chairman, before you, you should have a draft or a sample in regards to regulations. Basically, there's a combination of who they're similar to or are. There's nothing real long in here. We just define what a mobile food vendor would be. And then we have the requirements. Those two requirements would be required by the Department of Public Health and the Valley Health. And then basically, we have general requirements for the site so that if we have bad players, we have some enforcement capability. And we've taken into consideration a buffer if any of the areas, the CBD, the C2, the OIC, or D2 were to join against any residential or in that zone. At least there would be a 75 foot buffer to protect those areas. General housekeeping areas for some of the business of such as that. That seems to be consistent with other municipalities of our size. And then at the end, the last part of that is the special exemptions for those such as food vendors that would be attracted to events similar to those of the pumpkin festival. Maybe a school function where the football team, you know, there's a school event coming in. That would be, those people have to have their licenses anyway through their, you know, through their districts, but that wouldn't prohibit them or make them come into zoning compliance because that's just a one evening thing for one day. So that's just a proposal for your consideration. There's some hours of operation which can be modified, but it's here for your review and your consideration.
Has everybody read the regulation? Have any comments?
I've got some questions. Mr. Birdsell.
Alright. I've had a lot of feedback on this regulation you put out. A lot of people say, how can you tell somebody open nine o'clock, five o'clock? They can't open up on a Sunday or holiday. You gotta have a table so far apart. People I spoke to said, this is so ridiculous and stuff. These proposals they make. We got one food truck here in Thomas Seymour. I don't think we need any regulations like this.
Just to confirm, Mr. Marsonak, this is just stuff that other towns had, right?
This is a combination of others. This is a proposal for possibly bad players that we have coming to town. This is suggestions to your commission. There is no hard task rule. Here, these are just what came to mind to help us police what we have coming into Seymour. The, and again, I'll stress that, the hours of operation, that is certainly within your program. I just took something that was there and said, okay.
Do you have a professional-
And gentlemen, you requested this information back about three months ago before September review. And it was presented for October. And you're now into October. So this was just sort of a suggestion that was recommended.
Okay. In your professional opinion, do you think that the hours of nine to five are appropriate? Is there a particular-
I have no argument about that.
Okay. Do you have a professional opinion on the number of tables as to why we can't have-
I have no opinion about that.
Right. Well, that's my point, is I tend to agree with Mr. Birdsell that some of these restrictions are a little bit overboard. I know other communities have had those. I'm just looking for reasons why.
Mr. Chairman, may I address the issue?
Yes.
As Mr. Martin said, the commission, when it was brought up and under Project Jordan for our regulation, Mr. Burton debated about it and requested what are your terms of some other information to stand. This is not offering any professional opinion, Mr. Tucker. Any opinion other than like in other countries.
Okay.
It would be up to your commission to decide what's best. The decision would be made by you, the discussion that you would have. Again, if you want to send this out, have a review of it, bring it over to Keith, and you can vet it out and write a proposal if you so felt you'd like that.
Okay. Yeah, I just want, I want to make absolutely clear that my questions weren't meant to be accusatory. They were just informational as I try to, as we try to figure out what our regulations are. So I just wanted to be clear on that.
Sure.
Reason why I brought it up, I got a lot of feedback on it. Six days reading at home, and my wife looked on my show as she reads and says, who wrote this up? Whoever wrote this up had to be anti-food truck. And I talked to a lot of people, and I mentioned what's in it. He says ridiculous, which is written here on his page.
So you think the information that was put together by Mr. Martin, the review and other information that was looked at from other towns are ridiculous? This wasn't written for me?
It is ridiculous.
Mr. Bird-
Let me take that. I liked what you did. It's very good. And they're just putting this up for review. Okay? So if you want to change something, you can change something. I read it. I thought it made a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Okay? Maybe if you have, you know, something about the time, that's fine. That could be changed very easily.
I also, I also want to add, Mr. Birdsell, that I was the one who asked staff to look at this. So if you're mad at anybody, you're really mad at me.
I'm not mad. I'm just saying, the feedback I got from some town, some people in the town.
Right.
It seems to be the only thing-
We only have one food truck here in town.
There's that. The other thing is, the only thing that seems to interfere with the operation of the food truck would be the hours of operation and the no tents, times, and see. I mean, that's, those are really the only terms that interfere with their operation. Is that a fair statement?
Oh, you also got Sundays and holidays.
Look, the food trucks are taking away from the restaurants also, okay? The people that are established here, that lead the business, that will live and work in this town, okay? Letting a free for all of food trucks come in and taking over without any type of regulation is not a good idea.
Believe me, you see a bunch of food trucks trying to come here in Seymour. They ran one out of town already.
We have to be sure that we're ready in case someone does. Something needs to be on the books.
Yeah, we have to be ready for a bad actor, as you point out. And we don't want to interfere with, unreasonably with their operation. And I think if we modified the hours, if we modified the, maybe a table, maybe, I'm just throwing that out there. And maybe the Sunday thing is a problem. But to have, and by doing that, I don't think we'd be interfering with them making a living, but we would have the opportunity if somebody came in and really did something obnoxious, which can happen, we'd be able to shut it down. So, you know, I mean, we got five people to vote, and some will be in favor, others will not. Why don't we, do we want to get into discussion about any specifics now, or? Like what if it was-
Is there any public hearing? Is anything in the public?
I think that's a good idea, because if we have a public hearing on it, all the people that the office is talking about to come in and voice their opinion.
Yeah, if nobody wants it.
As well as stakeholders who own restaurants.
And as far as the nine to five is, we can change that per food truck. We can leave that open to where if the guy really wants to stay open to six or eight o'clock, that's fine, but it's going to be an added fee.
When we, when we have information in the office or in the public hearing, trying to something with the food vendors, let's call up certain other businesses we're negotiating. We see the call, there's not a regulation, there's no answer to that. And that's why I brought it up in the first place, is us bringing information to you.
So why don't, why don't we consider having a public hearing?
Right. I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing.
Do we have a second? Oh, you want to give us, okay, just right. All in favor? Opposed?
What we got to say?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What were you going to say?
You have some public hearing.
Right. We could postpone this one because this is not really an important one. I mean, it's important, I mean, it's important, but we do, the next hearing coming up is going to be jammed up enough, so we should set this, we should just table it for now, bring it up at the next meeting. Then the office, you can come up with some more ideas that you want to talk about, and then we could set a public hearing at the next meeting.
Is there any specific direction you'd like staff to do?
I'm fine with what you did, and we could just adjust the time or anything else that anybody else has concern on, and we could take it from there.
Why don't we all go home, look at this?
Winter's coming, so we've got time.
What changes might be appropriate? We can inform staff, and then depending upon our schedule, we can, I think we should have a public hearing. We have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, no, that makes less-
Let's just table it for a month.
We'll table this for the next meeting.
Yeah, alright, so why don't we, why don't you make a motion for that?
Make a motion to table the food truck regulations for the next meeting.
Do we have a second? All in favor?
Who was the second?
Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so carried. Number nine. High Ridge State subdivision expired and abandoned. It was tabled from last month. Can, what are we, what are we doing with that tonight? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Earl Tucker. I'm the current owner of the property. The subject property tonight is the 11 lot, or was the 11 lot subdivision of the Warren Drive called High Ridge State. We're here in front of the commission tonight to ask them to accept the original A2 survey that we dug into the archives and found. This is a stamped and sealed copy of that survey. And I'm also here to testify to you that I have been in control of the property since 2002. I have owned the property since 2008, and I currently own the property. I've never took a bond out with the town to redo the subdivision. I have never pulled a permit from the town. I've never cut one tree on the property, and I've never moved a cubic yard of dirt on the property.
But has, have any trees been cleared on the property?
None. Zero. And I'm just here to tell you that. And quite frankly, to go up and redo an A2 survey that's going to look exactly like this, it's going to cost me $600,000. And at no fault of the town, we've spent thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars getting approved. I have spent, over the course of 11 years, because of all of our approvals that expired, all of our extensions that expired, I paid the town $184,000 in property tax for an 11 lot subdivision. Again, the real estate market crashed, no fault of anybody. But we are simply trying to get the property to revert back to raw land. My neighbor next door pays $7,000 an acre. I'm currently paying $27,000 an acre, or being valued at $27,000, excuse me. And so there's a large difference, and there's a large financial hardship at stake here because I don't have a subdivision anymore. Everything is expired. And so we're just simply asking for the town to accept our original map, and then it'll be assessed back at raw land.
That's what we had asked for last time. Did we specifically ask for a new survey, Brian? What are we, what do we need to do to make this happen?
I had suggested that since it's a loan, that I'm doing that to compare. How is that not-
This is worth $2,000. And we can check on that. Land and area.
I'm trying to think of why we even have a problem with that.
Do you want to look at that map, or?
I don't know if I need to. I mean, it may be stamped and sealed, but it's not valid if you want a problem.
Can you take that?
I can't tell you if that's a problem. I don't think it is. It's stamped and sealed as of 2003, that's the way it was. I don't know if there's any real liability to the town and the letting of solid people in.
Yeah, that was my next question.
I don't think it's on him. But he's right. It would probably be $15,000 to the survey and outside all over and then unless, I don't know, I don't know. So I don't think there's any issue with that. And I don't know if the Mylar would have to be filed. I think it would be for the D2.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
The, can you verify, just, I'm just trying to get a glimpse of the site. It's on High Ridge Road, right?
This is off the Warren Drive.
Okay. Right. There's nothing much there. Does anybody else have any questions? I mean, I'm inclined to do something here because it seems- Do we have a second?
I'm sorry. What was the motion?
To return it to, returning it to a single act.
Approve the consolidation. Approve the consolidation.
Consolidated.
Yeah. Okay, do we have a second?
Please, sir.
All in favor? Any opposed? So carried. Thank you.
If I may, I'm counsel for Mr. Tucker. Is there anything specific-
You're not going to talk us out of this, then?
No. That was your last time.
You better wait. You better wait for it.
But what exactly do we need to do, if anything, in order to enact this?
Correcting deed?
Maybe we could submit. Do you have the Mylar?
Well, I don't know what the town would want.
I don't know. I mean, if you can get a Mylar that's sealed by-
To do a corrective deed, it's a-
I don't think you can get a sealed survey.
The problem is, the problem is right now is just a Mylar in the office that's signed as a subdivision. We've got to remove that.
You know, for a moment, you just, you put a deed in saying that it's no longer-
Okay.
Well, that's a good point. That is something you'll have to decide how to handle. That's not really anything we can tell you what to do.
When you think about your, your, if you're going to go sell it, your buyer's going to want something. Okay. I just wanted to make sure the topic, you know, absolutely.
We did what you asked, now you figure out what to do with what you got.
Very good. Very nice.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Alright, moving on to number 11. I'll need to recuse because I represent Mr. Mavouli.
What happened to 10?
I'm sorry. My bad. Number 10. Proposed section 18 text change. This was tabled from last month. Where do we stand on this? Time-wise?
Taking your package, you have a memo from myself as well as a modified section 18. We also have a letter today asking from the attorney, attorney Thomas, to give them the, ask for extension for that decision made tonight. I have no objection to that, to extending the decision date for the next meeting. I don't believe that my memo will change from then to that, from now to then. But if it's, if the attorney has asked for it, I see no reason why not. At this point. Do you have any questions on, on those changes that were made from the time, from our discussion? I'm here to answer them.
Are we allowed to table this again with the public hearing being closed?
Yeah.
We have, that's what this letter says.
The hearing wasn't closed.
Yeah.
Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed, and we have, and we have an extension from the town.
And they went to the meeting, and they asked for an extension to the memo. But I have no objection to that at this point. I'm just giving you the caveat of the explanation that you have my memo, and it will not change to a normal.
Okay. So why don't we just move it to November?
I'd like to make a motion to extend it to the next meeting. I can request it.
All in favor? Any opposed? So carried unanimously? I lost mine.
Now it's 46 and 100 Roosevelt Drive.
I just had that damn thing. I can do it. No, I'm looking. Do you have, are yours?
I don't think I got one either.
Alright, let's move on to number, now we're at number 11. 46 and 100 Roosevelt Drive. I have to recuse myself, so we'll need a motion to install Walter as acting chair.
I'll make a motion to install Walter as the acting chair.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I opposed. So carried. Walter? It's yours.
Okay, next is number 46, 100 Roosevelt Drive, site plan application. It was tabled from last month's meeting. Engineer had to review it.
For the record, Matthew Niski, structural engineer, I'm going to be representing Mr. Mavouli for number 46 and 100 Roosevelt Drive. Just to kind of refresh your memory, we are proposing a three-building development on the site. An upper residence, a middle winery, tasting room, and ice cream shop, and a lower residential and commercial building. As you can see from this map here, there are some large pockets of vines proposed on site. This is a cliff face here, so we can't obviously plant grapes on a cliff. I don't know if you've had a chance to review Mr. Nesteriak's latest comments.
No, I agree with Lee.
I will address all of them, so. Just to go through them. Number one is the walkability for sidewalks along the site. Last meeting, I did go over it. Horizontally, Mr. Nesteriak is correct, we do have room to put the sidewalks in, but due to the wetlands right in this area of the site, and then there is a large hill over here, sidewalks would be kind of restrained, restricted to the front section of the site. I don't know if you've walked out there, but this area here, the guardrail's right up against the road. There's not real, and then it drops right off. There's not a lot of space to put sidewalks without major regrade. If the commission would like, we can put them in front of the site, but across the road is the river, and over here is actually Regional Water Authority property. So it will more than likely never be developed, and next to the site are residential houses. So the chances of in the near future sidewalks being put in, so the work would kind of be a moot point as of right now. Two, public health. We are in front of public health. We've just got three state testing. We are going back out in the next week or two to finalize testing. In terms of the plans that were submitted for last meeting, the only changes that have been changed are we are adding a grease trap to the winery building. That really doesn't affect zoning. It is just on the ground right in front of the building, next to the septic tank and pump chamber. Three, again, if the commission so chooses to go the route, stormwater maintenance program, I do have copies here for the commission to review if they would so choose. They're pretty standard. The underground attentions are inspected, cleaned out as needed. The wetlands are inspected, cleaned as needed. Same with the catch grease and sump. So if the commission would like, I could hand those out with the commission.
Well, it's always good.
There we go. I only printed out just enough, so. It's standard inspections which would be conducted to keep the system operating. And then the bond for soil erosion, if, again, the commission so chooses, my only request is to just let us, let me and my client know how they wish to determine the bond. Does the commission wish to choose it? Would Mr. Nesteriak set it? Or would I come up with an estimate which will then be presented to the commission for approval?
Any questions from the commission?
I believe, well, who wants to set the bond? You guys would figure out what the one is, right?
Specifically, what happened is just the engineer was convinced that the office was going to have a license. And either agree or disagree, we'll come up with something.
Okay, so you guys, you guys could work on that.
We'll work on it. If it's just a condition of, I'm saying with the maintenance program, I think it's the first I've seen it. Honestly, I want a little more than this, but I'm sure something maybe could come up together, like if they can just do a, to get something efficient for the rest of the year.
Right, so they still-
Do you think we're all set to approve this? And more questions for you? Do you think we're all set to approve this plan?
I'm not going to tell you.
No, I think we're, I think-
Do we have any more?
No, no, no. I think we're set to approve this upon the condition about setting the bond, right? And the concerns that Brian has about what we just gave.
The next, those are conditions that were discussed.
Yep, exactly what she did. Right. The condition should be set.
That's the final say on the bond and amount that can be made.
Do I have a motion in?
Yeah.
To add to my, my kind of, the sidewalk, the pad, for the last two letters, we made a bunch of changes in the, in the, in the, in the walkability and the large- is kind of a large part of, of the, the goals of the town, not only down there, but everywhere else. I don't agree with the engineer that it's that difficult to turn the sidewalk, um, so I do realize there would be the only sidewalk in that area, however, we're hoping that it's not developed and it's going to, um.
If something gets built next to it. So that's why it should go from property line to property.
Well, as much as you can get. There are some culvert stuff that's been, need to be dealt with, and there hasn't been an effort to put the sidewalks in on any of the plans, so I keep putting it up, I think it's a good idea, but.
I mean, two questions, two, where's the type of, of sidewalk? Would it be a private sidewalk or a public sidewalk? Would it become private property as another thing, but if it becomes state, well, you might feel like it's going to state to make it okay.
Yeah, it would.
Yes.
It would actually go in front of the state. I mean, typically, it would be, it would be a sidewalk either along the road and right here off the road. That's what I'm envisioning, try.
I'm saying further off that road would be better.
We would talk with the DOT and they would throw in everything we do and give us what they want.
Well, I'm saying you wanna be off, you want it to be a private sidewalk, so not do.
No, no, I, I would think it would be in the same road.
With the new, okay, yeah, 'cause it's 15 foot, is it 15 foot?
It's quite large.
Is it 15 foot?
I think it varies, I have to roll curves and.
So just to make it fit.
Correct. It would fit more the curve of the road rather than property line, because property line kind of does its own thing and it would match the.
I think what Brian is saying too, what you need to get, what you go. See what's.
We will try, like I said, we know this area right around here that's pretty tight with the overhand, we will look into it and estimate everything, run through it here, and then the same thing is over here, I know the grading goes from, yeah, a road to, to a slope, to a, we will.
And it will be your responsibility to maintain that.
Correct, it is in front of the.
Shovel in the winter and make sure it's maintained.
Job will maintain it.
Yep. Right, right, it was correct.
We need a second to his motion.
I need a second to the motion, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
What was the lowest, what condition did you?
We took the conditions that you stated before, you had written it down when I made the motion.
Can I read back?
Setting a bond.
Go ahead, read.
Read it back.
And concerns.
Wait, let, let Mary read it back.
All I have is setting the bond subject to town engineer approval and concerns of the town engineer.
That's fine.
I couldn't hear you.
Site redevelopment.
Well, I just, um.
Upon Brian's review?
Of a, of a stormwater maintenance plan that would leave, would be by town and would be by town anywhere. It would be posting about facility or, in an amount that would be reviewed by town and reviewed by town everywhere. And then whatever you wanna do in the suburbs and side, that is completely up to you.
Which, yes, we'll also put that in the site development.
So, so you'd like to make a conditional that the sidewalk is pursued?
Yeah, this is.
Permanent for sidewalks to stay pursued.
As far as.
As far as possible.
As far as possible within reason.
I think that would be well.
And his responsibility to maintain it.
Yeah, he, yeah, that goes along. Okay. You wanna read that back again?
Alright, so that the soil and erosion controls are reviewed and approved by the town engineer and, um.
The, the bond amount.
The bond amount and also soil and erosion control measures, and then the sidewalk is pursued as far as possible.
Can I?
Alright, wait a minute, site redevelopment, stormwater maintenance plan.
Um, keep it paired and reviewed by town.
Right.
Joe, Joe will second?
He seconded it, yeah, I got it.
Change your, it's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, all in favor? You in the front?
Okay.
Now we can bring Joe back in.
Did he leave?
I remember he was.
Bladen's Ridge, that's, that's just tabled.
Am I out for this next one?
Next one is 12. Bladen's Ridge.
Oh, back to 12.
That's a copy of the memo that you didn't have in the.
Oh, here it is, yeah, thanks. Alright, so, um, do we need to reinstall me as?
Yeah, make a motion to install Joe as chairman.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you, moving on to number 12 now, Bladen's, Bladen's Ridge. Do we wanna discuss anything here, or are we just waiting until we have some more conversation? And we've already continued, so we're gonna.
Correct, so we're set, we're, we're gonna set a public hearing, the continuance of the public hearing from November 14th.
So that's all we're doing with this? We're saying, we're actually physically now saying, making a motion to set the public here, the continuance? I'm getting, I'm confused. Somebody help me with that. Yeah, we did that, I was there, I saw, I heard that. So what are we doing?
That's the continuing.
Right.
Obviously, we're ready.
Correct. We're, that's my point.
Not everybody.
I'm just saying that it's not there, it's working here. You're gonna set it now.
Well, no, I, I knew we weren't, I just wondering if we need to do anything, do we need to?
Do we need to tape, do they need to table it?
I think we can move to 13, I mean, my, my inclination is just to move on to 13.
Just that public hearing is continued, okay.
Well, let's wait and see what. They're leaving me hanging on the high harmony here.
Okay. The other question I have to do is, I understand the site plan, but then, I don't know that.
Yes, I can leave it out.
That's not on your agenda, but during the meeting, if you want to ask for an agenda that you, that you, your site plan application, I mean, you also have a public hearing, right?
Well, what discretion do we have to not do that?
The, the application is filed, they've made application.
Right.
Which is, what, what their, what their plan area is in, or two, they have come after, met the requirement to the application.
Okay, and what is?
And we just pulled that, it's made to be, you can discuss that.
No, no, we're not, we're not.
You wanna make it so you can discuss it, okay.
So now, your site plan application is, is going to be offered, not on your agenda, during the meeting, in the, in the, in the agenda, in the, in the, in the position.
Right.
So if you are looking to discuss that, as an application, I mean, said, and then you're going to, you're going to decide you want to, whatever you wanna do.
Is there any reason why we shouldn't accept it?
I'd like to make a motion to retable it to the next meeting.
So just to confirm.
Yeah.
Just to con.
It's not on your agenda.
Just to confirm, if we accept the application, that means that we have to set the meeting for next month?
No.
Okay.
The time starts at 6:00.
When we accept it.
If it's your, if it's your normal process to set the application, file it.
My understanding is that once we've, once the application's been filed, we have accepted it. I don't, have we ever formally accepted?
Well, you have a site plan application that has met the requirements, they met all the requirements.
Right.
So it comes here for, for actual, your, um, segment, requirement, you know, pay for, for, so then you would, hey, look at that application, you made here, when you applicant, you're an opposite of it, and then set your.
Alright, so, right, I understand. So let's.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting that we just set the public hearing.
Well, we have to first, let's, let's first add to the agenda, then we'll talk about it. This should've been easier than this is turning out to be.
We've got a public hearing already, extended for next meeting.
No, we're, this is different application, different application. Alright, let's, let's have.
I'm gonna make a motion that we add to the agenda, the application of, of the site plan, of the site plan, of Bladen's Ridge.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor?
Who was the second?
Who's second, Joe?
Thank you.
Aye.
Any opposed? One, one opposed, Walter's opposed?
I'm opposed.
Uh, two opposed, so what are we, two to three?
Three to two.
Three in favor, two opposed.
You can't have, you only got five members, kind of more, he's an alternate.
Three to two.
Three, three.
Let's do a slide.
Okay, let's move on. So it's now on the agenda, so now let's discuss what we're doing with this. We, our next step is to, do we need to formally accept the application and set the public hearing, or can we?
No, I said we set the public hearing.
It's actually in your, it's actually in your package, right?
Correct, right.
It's all in the.
Right, I, I read it, I know, I know everything about it.
Right.
I know every, I'm good on this.
So now, so now we're gonna set a public hearing.
It's the procedural stuff, in case you hadn't noticed, I'm sure nobody's picked up on that, that I have difficulty with.
Right, right.
So.
So you'd like to speak.
So tell us about what you'd like us to do.
No.
You don't have to speak, you know. Go, go ahead, Brian, what were you, what were you gonna say?
No, I'm just, you guys decided what you wanted to, how do you want it to carry through, are you wanting it to public hearing?
Well, that's what I said, I'm, I'm suggesting we, we, we set a public hearing.
I'll second that.
We're clearly gonna do that.
Obviously, it's probably a good idea, but.
Right, I'm gonna make a motion to set the public hearing for the application of Bladen's Ridge.
Alright, that's good. Do we, any discussion about that?
You understand that you're, you're making applications, you're, 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 you expect, you expect regulation?
Well, right, that's correct, but you know, everything we got commented today was towards more of the, the application and not the text change per se.
I understand, but you may wanna set the public hearing down the road so that you have a sense of where you're going with the note.
What are, what are our, what are our time constraints for this?
Our time constraints is the problem with that.
Sixty-five, right?
Sixty-five days.
Yeah, time.
Just about eight, they're, they're, they're up to December.
Okay, so let's set it for our December meeting.
Okay, make, make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Set the public hearing for December maybe.
I'll second.
Joe, second, Walter or Joe?
December 12.
At 6:30, are we doing hearings at 6:30, at 6:30 PM? Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
I second.
All in favor? Any opposed? So carried, so we're set.
Correspondence is next.
Okay, number 13, correspondence, do we have any? There's no correspondence. In that case, we'll move on to number 14, I'm sure this is gonna be controversial.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Aye, aye, second.
Second, anybody in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So carried, we adjourned.